Hi, everybody. I just wanted to let you know that if you need a copy of the handouts with the candidate's picture, they're here and available actually out on the table where the candidate literature is. So, um, stuff you decide to like those. Down here, close to your mouth. They will tell you if they can't hear you. Oh, yeah. So, but you two will be sharing a microphone. You can also, you know, they're secret. They're on, and ice cream cone. We share. Thank you for the ice cream cone. Yeah. I think it must have fallen off when I took my, uh, I took my, uh, bag out of water. Thanks for having us. Sure. I'm excited about this. I was excited to director of, uh, so, I just want to say, oh, I, uh, I call her, I guess, that's me. I got a fund right there. I love to try to see, uh, I've been, uh, you know, so, yeah. Pretty many to Washington, uh, because there's so, I mean, I tried some, but it just didn't work. Yeah. And, and, you know, and like, um, there's a lot of things we have, um, like, you can say for people, there's, one of the, yeah, just, you know, the wall, it just, you get something you're sent up. And then you did, uh, you know, representation. Like, to relax, kind of make some of those changes, like, keep all these, you say you're, you're starting, okay. That was really, it was, oh, wonderful. I'll let you finish your sentence. Two, seven wide, and then seven. Yeah. Well, family's gonna be anything, right? So, I think that's wonderful. I'm gonna be compliant with it now. It was nice chatting. We're gonna start in just a minute. I have to wait for Risa to come back. Hi, Alexis. This is Laura. Nice to meet you. From Toto. No, it was perfectly fine. Good to meet you. Welcome. Thank you for joining us this evening. I am May Gersell, a member of the Horizon House Election Forum Committee. This forum is being livestreamed on our in-house channel, HHTV. Tonight, we're very pleased to welcome candidates who are running for two different at-large positions on the Seattle City Council. First, for some background, the Seattle City Council has nine members who serve for four-year terms. Two are elected for citywide, at-large positions, and seven are elected by districts. Tonight, you're gonna hear from the at-large candidates. The city council is the legislative branch of Seattle City Government. It has the sole responsibility of approving the city's budget, and it develops laws and policies intended to promote the health and safety of Seattle's residents. The council passes all legislation related to the city's police, firefighting, parks, libraries, and city utilities. The mayor is a separately-elected executive who has the responsibility of implementing legislation passed by the council. Council positions are officially nonpartisan. The two at-large positions, the people you're meeting tonight, are paid approximately $144,000 a year. Now, I'm very pleased to introduce our moderator, Lois, excuse me, Laura Wies. Thank you, May. I certainly wanted to extend our thanks to the candidates. And may I say, on behalf of all of us in Anderson Hall, those that are in the overflow room in the fireside lounge, and those that are watching on HHTV, so, thank you, candidates, for coming. Let's give them a big hand. Okay. Oh, I was gonna introduce them right now, so you would know their names. Jessie A. James, on my right. This is, these are candidates for council position number eight. So, they're competing for the job that Alexis Mercedes-Rink now has as the incumbent. And then Ray Rogers is there, and Rachel Savage. These are all the candidates for position number eight. And on my left, the council position number nine, Dion Foster. Uh, it looks like Mia Jacobson is not here, so we'll go to Connor Nash. And then Sarah Nelson, who is the incumbent and council president. So, it's great to have you. I think all of the candidates received the format and ground rules for this forum, but I thought I should go over them quickly, so the audience will know how this will proceed. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement, and that is, would be followed by a question-and-answer period, when candidates have one minute each to answer questions that are submitted, or have been submitted, by the Horizon House residents. And after that, the closing statement, which I originally thought would be two minutes, I'm gonna ask if you could do just one minute tonight, because I wanna get in as many questions as we can. So, we have, it looks like, seven candidates. Okay. Candidates and audience should note that we have two very meticulous timers sitting in the front row, Doris Ray and Adele Reynolds. And they will let you know when you have 15 seconds left. And, uh, let's see, that's the one, the green car, and the red means finish right now, you're over your time. So, thank you to Doris and Adele. Okay, now for your opening statement. For this, we did send the candidate a question ahead of time that we wanted them to answer as part of their opening statement. And this is the question. Why are you a candidate for this position? What are your goals and emphasis in this position? And how will you accomplish these goals? So, that's quite, all right, yes, that's a big one. So, we're gonna start with position eight and go in alphabetical order. So, I'm gonna call on Mr. James.
Do I take the stand? Sorry. All right, all right. Good, uh, crowd here today. Good crowd. My name is Jessie A. James, and I've lived in Seattle about 95% of my life. As for the other 5%, that's your guess. All right. I am currently a writer and journalist for The Summit, which is a new online source of local news and politics for those sick of the same-old, same-old. Now, I have run for office before. As some of you know, I ran for House of Representatives in 2022. I had a platform based on protecting reproductive rights and tax reform. I was scheduled to have a forum here, but I had to call out sick, and for that, I apologize, and hopefully, I can make it up to all of you today. All right. So, earlier this year, I was elected to the Board of Directors of the Cascade Party of Washington, which is a new party, here to give an authentic voice to Washingtonians and Seattleites alike. I ran on a, or I was elected after I successfully pushed to add freedom of speech and universal healthcare to the party platform. It was a fun and exciting convention, I'll tell you that much. All right. As for taxes, I do support progressive taxes, like the much-talked-about capital gains tax. However, I do not support regressive taxes, like the infamous Seattle sweetened beverage tax. And in closing, I hope to bring a firm voice of balance and rationality to the, to the city council, which is precisely why I'm asking you for your vote. Thanks for coming, everyone. Have a good night. Let's have some fun.
Hello? Wonderful. Good evening, everybody. My name is Alexis Mercedes-Rink. I'm a renter and someone who gets to work every day on the G-line. I went from waiting tables next to the Space Needle to working on policy at the UW Tower to now serving you on Seattle City Council, fighting for a city that works for all of us, and not just the ultra-wealthy few. And in my work across communities, I've gained a reputation for bringing people together around solutions and making things happen. I got my master's degree at the UW, and since then, I've worked across 39 cities and with over 100 different organizations on housing and health for our communities. And since joining council, I've partnered with our state delegation to restore critical funding for programs that make our communities safer. I successfully defended against the attacks on our Code of Ethics, which would have allowed councilmembers to vote on things even if they had a financial conflict of interest. And just today, my new legislation related to affordable housing development is out, which will support more affordable housing development across the city. And in times of national strife, Seattle must stand as a beacon of hope and resilience. And as we confront a Trump regime determined to attack our rights and our values as a city, I've led in our city's fight by standing up a dedicated committee focused on federal policy change, so we can respond in real-time to these attacks. And I was brought to this work in the first place because of my upbringing. I am proudly raised by my grandparents. I was born to teenagers who have been caught in the cycles of substance use disorder, homelessness, and prison. But I'm here today because of good public schools with teachers who saw me and intervened when I needed it. I'm here because of the Boys and Girls Club, my community center, my grandpa's good union job. And I stand here today as a living testament to when we invest in young people and working families regardless of their beginnings, we can change generations. And we need to protect those investments. And so, last year, we had a record-breaking win, and we're continuing to do the work to unite Seattle. And with that, I'm really excited to chat with you tonight. I'm really excited to hopefully earn your vote. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bishop Ray Rogers. I am a lifelong resident of Seattle, Washington, who came up during the '90s during the drug epidemic. I myself got caught into gangs and drugs and violence. But since then, now, almost 30 years later, I've turned my life around. I'm leading a homeless prevention called Circle Love Outreach, where we tackle homelessness, we're feeding, making sure that we are doing our very part in the fight for homelessness. And during the course of this, we've encountered sex trafficking, we've encountered so much more. And it's very important that I indicate to you that now is the acceptable time to make sure that we're making our voice heard, that not only our voice, but that we are doing the work that is needed. There are many challenges that this city is faced with. I have come, as like some of my constituents, through the course of this, and I'm the man for the job. I will focus hard with respects to fair taxes, to protect the most vulnerable, our seniors, more so than that, our public safety. I'm an advocate as it relates to public safety. It was our former interim police chief, Harry Bailey, who was my arresting officer, who is now my mentor. So, I know the very importance of public safety, where everyone is safe. Our youth are dying at a rapid rate. We need to make sure that everyone's safe, not just the middle class, but those that are down in the Rainier Valley area. And I'm going to be the much-needed, refreshing voice that comes to city, uh, city council every morning, geared to do the job to make sure that I am imparting in the decisions that are being made. Thank you.
All right. Hello. My name's Rachel Savage, and I'm running for position eight, citywide. And why am I in the race? Well, I'm a business owner. I'm not a politician. I'm a real person who has had to live the effects of the lack of law enforcement and the failed drug policy in the city of Seattle. So, what I see from my shop on Capitol Hill and Broadway is a failed approach to helping drug-addicted and mentally ill. We have a fentanyl epidemic, so my goal on the city council is to solve the fentanyl epidemic and the severe mental illness epidemic in our streets once and for all. I believe we can do this. My goal is practical. I believe we can do this by first restoring law enforcement. So, I am the candidate that is endorsed by the Seattle Police Officers Guild. I'm very proud of that. Yay, public safety and police officers. And I will work tirelessly to build, one, to allow the police to do their job, build our own Seattle City Jail. It's time for jail for public drug use and crimes associated with drug use or treatment. So, the failed policy I'm talking about that allows drug addicts and severely mentally ill to be on the streets is the same policy that my opponent, Rink, wants to continue and have you pay for. So, this is giving drug addicts and criminals free housing in our city that the taxpayers pay for. I think we can do more, a more compassionate plan. Treatment first. So, a Seattle City Jail, a Seattle City temporary and then permanent, long-term residential treatment for drug addicts, and long-term residential treatment for the mentally ill. It's time to stop the cruelty and bring compassion and common sense to our city, and I will get that job done. Thank you.
Now, we'll hear from, now, let's see, I need one of the microphones. Notice we had one too many. Yes, thank you. It's time to hear from candidates for position nine, and we'll start with Dion Foster.
Thank you so much. First, thank you for having me. My name's Dion Foster, and I am so excited to be running for Seattle City Council, position nine. I wanna tell you a little bit about myself. I decided to run for this position because of both my professional and my personal experience. I was raised by my mom, who is a single parent and a teacher, and she was someone who worked really hard every day to take care of her kids at school and take care of her kids at home. And we also struggled to make ends meet as a family, even though she was working full-time. I got my first job on my 16th birthday at Chick-fil-A, where I made $6 an hour, and I started paying bills in my household. I paid bills when our electricity got cut off, I helped my mom pay for groceries, and I knew that life shouldn't be like that for anyone. And I'm really proud that I've gotten to build a career around changing those facts for people. I was a policy advisor for the city of Seattle, for the CEO of the Public Utility, where I got to work on delivering affordable utility services for working families in the city. I worked at Seattle Foundation as a program officer, where I invested in community-based organizing and efforts to address our housing crisis, support immigrants and refugees, and build a city that's gonna work for all of us. And most recently, I was executive director of a fantastic nonprofit called Washington Progress Alliance, where we were part of the team that helped ensure that the state passed and protected our state's capital gains tax. That tax is incredibly important, because it is a progressive tax that invests millions of dollars into childcare, schools, and early education. I am proud of that record, and I decided to run for city council, because I wanna fight for a city that's gonna be affordable for all of us. I'm also a mom. I have an incredible 12-year-old son, and I hope that he gets to grow up and live in this city, and that he can afford to live in this city on one job. I think it is important that we continue to make progress on making this a city that is safe, livable, and walkable for young people. I'm running because I wanna make sure that we have fantastic transit and connections for folks who are coming into downtown or who are going into the neighborhoods. I'm really proud that my campaign has received the sole endorsement of all of the local, uh, the local Democrats, of Planned Parenthood, and of the Alliance for Gun Responsibility, because I'm a candidate that's gonna work for our values. Thank you.
Connor Nash.
Hello, everybody. I'm Connor Nash, and I'm running to be your next city council member in position nine. I'm a candidate for city council, because for years, especially under the leadership of my opponent here, we have had a council that has been unresponsive to the needs of our communities, and are full of people who grandstand instead of actually bringing results. We have a council that cuts social services to increase our police budget. Our in-house population are criminalized with no plans on how to help or deal with their root causes of their issues. And we, we had our ethics laws that were under attack, and it wasn't to help you, but it was to enrich our council members, especially Council President Nelson. The problems in Seattle have been most evident in the neighborhood that I live in, which is Little Saigon. For the past six years, I've watched a beautiful, historic neighborhood become one of distress because of an out-of-control drug market caused by city neglect. Our city government has decided to launch a useless war on drugs, which has an anti-drug zone that does not work, has a hostile architecture that makes my neighborhood look unsafe, and we have police cameras that are invasive and that do not work at all. And my opponent only comes to my neighborhood, not to listen to the neighborhood or to help us, but only if there's a camera on her that she can talk to. And instead of the problems that we're having, we need to be listening to our community members, and we need to be focusing on social services, to be dealing with the root causes of people's addiction, not just increasing our police budget on here. We need to have more funding for public defenders, so that people can get the help that they need, especially at our UW mental health facility that's up on the UW campus. And finally, we need to have community-led plans, such as Little Saigon's FODP, that brings stakeholders together to address the problems in our neighborhoods, and not have our current top-down approach that the city uses. And we need a Green New Deal jobs program, so that we can combat the problems that are coming from the Trump administration, to help our economy and save our environment. And you'll learn more about my plan a little bit later, so thank you.
Sarah Nelson.
So, the, just to be clear, the green means how much more time?
15 seconds.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Hello, everyone. It's good to be back here, but for those of you who don't know me, my name is Sarah Nelson. I'm running for reelection to the city council. I am a 35-year Seattle resident, a wife, mother, lifelong Democrat, small-business owner, and I ran in 2021, four years ago, because I saw a city in need of recovery. Think about the, uh, the encampments, the rising crime, the, the inhumanity that we saw in our streets, and I knew that the city could do better. So, I ran partly because I was also in recovery, and, uh, it, recovery gave my, my, my life back, and I believe that everybody deserves the same chance at recovery that I had, but also because I believe that addiction lies at the heart and is inextricably linked to our, our chronic homelessness and public safety problems. And so, that's why I focused on it. You might have seen the article in the Seattle Times. This is a pilot project.
Called Circle Love Outreach where we tackle homelessness, we feeding, making sure that we are doing our very part in the fight for homelessness. And during the course of this, we've encountered sex trafficking. We've encountered so much more. And it's very important that I indicate to you that now is the acceptable time to make sure that we're making our voice heard, that not only our voice, but that we are doing the work that is needed. There are many challenges that this city is faced with. I have come as like some of my constituents through the course of this, and I'm the man for the job. I will focus hard with respects to fair taxes, to protect the most vulnerable, our seniors, more so than that, our public safety. I'm an advocate as it relates to public safety. It was our former interim police chief, Harry Bailey, who was my arresting officer, who is now my mentor. So I know the very importance of public safety, where everyone is safe. Our youth are dying at a rapid rate. We need to make sure that everyone's safe, not just the middle class, but those that are down in the Rayner Valley area. And I'm going to be the much-needed refreshing voice that comes to City Council every morning, geared to do the job to make sure that I am imparting in the decisions that are being made. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Rachel Savage, and I'm running for position eight, citywide. And why am I in the race? Well, I'm a business owner. I'm not a politician. I'm a real person who has had to live the effects of the lack of law enforcement and the failed drug policy in the city of Seattle. So what I see from my shop on Capitol Hill and Broadway is a failed approach to helping drug-addicted and mentally ill. We have a fentanyl epidemic, so my goal on the city council is to solve the fentanyl epidemic and the severe mental illness epidemic in our streets once and for all. I believe we can do this. My goal is practical. I believe we can do this by first restoring law enforcement. So I am the candidate that is endorsed by the Seattle Police Officers Guild. I'm very proud of that. Yay, public safety and police officers. And I will work tirelessly to build, one, to allow the police to do their job, build our own Seattle City Jail. It's time for jail for public drug use and crimes associated with drug use or treatment. So the failed policy I'm talking about that allows drug addicts and severely mentally ill to be on the streets is the same policy that my opponent, Rink, wants to continue and have you pay for. So this is giving drug addicts and criminals free housing in our city that the taxpayers pay for. I think we can do more compassionate plan. Treatment first. So a Seattle City Jail, a Seattle City temporary and then permanent long-term residential treatment for drug addicts, and long-term residential treatment for the mentally ill. It's time to stop the cruelty and bring compassion and common sense to our city, and I will get that job done. Thank you.
Now we'll hear from, now let's see, I need one of the microphones. Notice we had one too many.
Yes, thank you. It's time to hear from candidates for position nine, and we'll start with Deion Foster.
Thank you so much. First, thank you for having me. My name's Deion Foster, and I am so excited to be running for Seattle City Council, position nine. I want to tell you a little bit about myself. I decided to run for this position because of both my professional and my personal experience. I was raised by my mom, who is a single parent and a teacher, and she was someone who worked really hard every day to take care of her kids at school and take care of her kids at home. And we also struggled to make ends meet as a family, even though she was working full-time. I got my first job on my 16th birthday at Chick-fil-A, where I made $6 an hour, and I started paying bills in my household. I paid bills when our electricity got cut off. I helped my mom pay for groceries, and I knew that life shouldn't be like that for anyone. And I'm really proud that I've gotten to build a career around changing those facts for people. I was a policy advisor for the city of Seattle, for the CEO of the Public Utility, where I got to work on delivering affordable utility services for working families in the city. I worked at Seattle Foundation as a program officer, where I invested in community-based organizing and efforts to address our housing crisis, support immigrants and refugees, and build a city that's going to work for all of us. And most recently, I was executive director of a fantastic nonprofit called Washington Progress Alliance, where we were part of the team that helped ensure that the state passed and protected our state's capital gains tax. That tax is incredibly important because it is a progressive tax that invests millions of dollars into childcare, schools, and early education. I am proud of that record, and I decided to run for city council because I want to fight for a city that's going to be affordable for all of us. I am also a mom. I have an incredible 12-year-old son, and I hope that he gets to grow up and live in this city and that he can afford to live in this city on one job. I think it is important that we continue to make progress on making this a city that is safe, livable, and walkable for young people. I'm running because I want to make sure that we have fantastic transit and connections for folks who are coming into downtown or who are going into the neighborhoods. I'm really proud that my campaign has received the sole endorsement of all of the local Democrats, of Planned Parenthood, and of the Alliance for Gun Responsibility, because I'm a candidate that's going to work for our values. Thank you.
Connor Nash.
Hello, everybody. I'm Connor Nash, and I'm running to be your next city council member in position nine. I'm a candidate for city council because for years, especially under the leadership of my opponent here, we have had a council that has been unresponsive to the needs of our communities and are full of people who grandstand instead of actually bringing results. We have a council that cuts social services to increase our police budget. Our unhoused population are criminalized with no plans on how to help or deal with their root causes of their issues. And we had our ethics laws that were under attack, and it wasn't to help you, but it was to enrich our council members, especially Council President Nelson. The problems in Seattle have been most evident in the neighborhood that I live in, which is Little Saigon. For the past six years, I've watched a beautiful historic neighborhood become one of distress because of an out-of-control drug market caused by city neglect. Our city government has decided to launch a useless war on drugs, which has an anti-drug zone that does not work, has a hostile architecture that makes my neighborhood look unsafe, and we have police cameras that are invasive and that do not work at all. And my opponent only comes to my neighborhood, not to listen to the neighborhood or to help us, but only if there's a camera on her that she can talk to. And instead of the problems that we're having, we need to be listening to our community members, and we need to be focusing on social services to be dealing with the root causes of people's addiction, not just increasing our police budget on here. We need to have more funding for public defenders so that people can get the help that they need, especially at our UW mental health facility that's up on the UW campus. And finally, we need to have community-led plans such as Little Saigon's FODP that bring stakeholders together to address the problems in our neighborhoods and not have our current top-down approach that the city uses. And we need a Green New Deal jobs program so that we can combat the problems that are coming from the Trump administration to help our economy and save our environment. And you'll learn more about my plan a little bit later, so thank you.
So just to be clear, the green means how much more time?
Fifteen seconds.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Hello, everyone. It's good to be back here, but for those of you who don't know me, my name is Sarah Nelson. I'm running for reelection to the city council. I am a 35-year Seattle resident, a wife, mother, lifelong Democrat, small business owner, and I ran in 2021, four years ago, because I saw a city in need of recovery. Think about the encampments, the rising crime, the inhumanity that we saw in our streets, and I knew that the city could do better. So I ran partly because I was also in recovery, and recovery gave my life back, and I believe that everybody deserves the same chance at recovery that I had, but also because I believe that addiction lies at the heart and is inextricably linked to our chronic homelessness and public safety problems. And so that's why I focused on it. You might have seen the article in the Seattle Times. This is a pilot project I started, and it's actually saving lives. Progress is slow, but I'm hoping that you will see that things are getting better. Violent crime is down, 911 calls times are 10% faster, we're moving more people into housing, and we've made investments in housing, in a lot of housing solutions. But progress, I'll admit, is frustratingly slow and also fragile. Trump is elevating the extremes on both sides of our political spectrum, and I firmly believe that the best resistance to the chaos coming out of DC is a well-run city. And local government shouldn't take its eye off the ball of what we're supposed to be doing, which is deliver basic services for all of you and to make sure that we've got a well-run city that's meeting everybody's needs. And so I look forward to talking about what I have done and accomplished during this evening, and thank you very much for having me today and coming out for this important election.
And now we'll go to the questions from Horizon House residents. Let me see if I can get on the right page here. Okay. The question should also be up on the screen so people can read it. Here's our first question. Remember, one minute answers. Horizon House and its residents have a stake in the safety and stability of downtown Seattle. Although revitalization is currently occurring, what additional measures would you support to increase and promote this process? I'm going to mix things up a little bit and start with Sarah on this and go backwards. Sarah. Yeah, you can just stand there.
Okay. Well, first of all, I do have a record of working very hard to increase the staffing levels of SPD because that will make the most difference in ensuring that there is more public safety on our streets. That is still important. That's the top concern that I hear from my constituents, and I'm proud to say that I will continue that, and we've made progress. We also have to focus on drawing business and life back to our downtown core. How do we do that besides public safety? We do it by eliminating, I say, the change-of-use law that makes it difficult to change the interior of one's building, to help small businesses grow and thrive. But mostly, it has to do with focusing on troublesome spots along Third Avenue and Pike and Pine and making sure that the safety that I think that is still people's top priority is sped up and implemented through smart public safety policies. And we've passed 14 public safety-related bills in the past year, and we have to keep our eye on that ball.
Connor?
Connor Nash.
Thank you. Well, I first want to say that many of the public safety measures that my opponent has been championing have not been working. And she says that progress is slow, but on the rate that it's going, it will never work. We can't just be arresting people who are experiencing substance use disorders. We need to actually be treating the root causes of their substance use disorders. So just having more people getting arrested and then cycling in and out of jail is not going to actually solve our problem. We actually need to have more addiction and mental health services available to people so that they can get the help they need so that they don't have to be on our streets anymore. And when it comes to downtown specifically, one thing that we need to be doing is, we have so many vacant office buildings, and we need to be working to convert them from office buildings into residential places that people can live in. One way to get more people into downtown is to have more people who are living in downtown so that it's not a ghost town at night and so that there are people there using the businesses, going to places, and experiencing our beautiful downtown.
Deion Foster.
Great, thank you. I will say, one of the things I'm really proud of is I have a master's in social work, and I actually taught students at the University of Washington for a while before I got into the career path that I'm in right now. And I think it's really important that we're looking at this as a systems challenge. Part of, and one of the first things I did when I decided to run was do a community walk with a group called We Deliver Care. And one of the things that was really evident to me is that we need to actually make sure there are more places for people to go when we are making referrals. I think it's important that we are expanding our shelter capacity so that we can actually connect people directly with services and that there's a place to go when they are offered a place to go. I think it's also really important that we continue to do more of the street activation. I got to be a part of some of that recently and out and celebrating with people, and we can see that that really makes a difference in the neighborhood for when people are using spaces actively and are feeling safe to be outside and feeling safe to be in the community. So I want to support that, and I want to, I will echo some of what my opponent said, which is also, we need to continue our investment in treatment. I think it is an incredibly important way to make sure that people actually have access to services and that the investments that the city is putting into treatment need to continue to scale up.
Thank you. Position eight, starting with Rachel Savage.
Great, thank you. This is my passion, downtown Seattle, rebuilding our city. My vision for Seattle is that we become the New York of the West Coast. Our city needs to be clean, safe, and welcoming, with law enforcement able to arrest for crimes associated with drug use. That will help to clean up our streets right away. And our long-term residential treatment program for both mental illness, severe mental illness and severe addiction is a compassionate response to our fentanyl crisis. After people are getting appropriate care, and this long-term residential treatment is not going to cost any more money. We'll spend the money. We're going to redirect. I'm here to save Seattle from the downward spiral of the taxes that my opponent, Rink, wants to increase. Once we give people appropriate care, the addicts, and have them stop committing crimes associated with addiction on the streets of Seattle, business will come booming back. Seattle is a beautiful city. We want it to be prosperous for hard-working citizens.
Ray Rogers.
Awesome. As I forestated, I am perhaps one of the only candidates here who's struggled with addiction and been homeless. I was given an opportunity through our former police chief, Harry Bailey, for arrest first. Sometimes, before you can offer treatment and mental health, there has to be some kind of intervention. Mine's was, I was arrested. I like to say that I wasn't arrested, but I was rescued. And as it relates to being arrested, then when I was in jail, I was given the opportunity. But first things first, we can't put the mule before the cow. They come simultaneously. And because I was rescued, I was given treatment, the option for treatment. We can't get away from doing first things first. And because I was given the option for treatment, I'm now clean and know what it's like to live sober. Let's give them an opportunity first.
Alexis, I'm sorry.
So we know that the return to office orders have bought a lot more folks downtown, but let's make downtown not just somewhere, sorry, let's make downtown not just somewhere where people work, but somewhere that's fun, that people want to go to after hours to have fun. And investing back in our art sector will be critical for that. We want to make sure, of course, folks are feeling comfortable, and that means addressing the public safety challenges that are downtown, improving our response times and having the right response for given scenarios, and scaling our services to make sure we're meeting folks' needs, but also revitalizing our arts and culture sector downtown as well. And I think there's a lot of great examples we can look to. If folks have been by the Bergman luggage place, that was once a site that had, was really rundown, but now actually has an affordable artist studio inside. It looks fantastic there, and being able to duplicate that success while also creating more opportunities for small businesses and investing back. And Mayor Harrell and I have a proposal that just came out last week related to giving some tax relief for small businesses so they can invest back in their business, and we can activate more storefronts downtown. Thank you.
Jesse James.
Me personally, I would take a more balanced approach. A lot of people talk about funding the police, and a lot of people talk about social workers, but not enough people talk about when you need police and when you need social workers, or some cases, you could use some of both, honestly. On public safety, the only thing I'd really want to add is I think we need to be looking into expanding involuntary commitment for those with severe mental illnesses, people who are a long-term danger to themselves, and that's all I will say. Thank you.
Oh, I've got one. Okay. All right, thank you. Question number two. We know that the city has adopted an interim plan for increasing housing density in Seattle. What do you see as problems that will develop as this plan is implemented, and what would you do to resolve them? And we're going to start with Andrea Rink. Yeah, I'm mixing things up here. Position eight.
Yeah, this is a great question and one front of mind. So right now, the city is working on a comprehensive plan which will shape what the future of our city looks like. And something that is a priority for my office is making sure we're creating more housing opportunity across the city. And that means being able to build more kinds of housing, more things like stacked flats, more things that young families could move into. And being able to build more housing means that more working folks will be able to stay within the city. We've had an issue with how we've built housing historically in this city with a history of redlining, and this is our opportunity for being able to remedy that by creating more housing opportunity in more neighborhoods around the city. We've unfortunately pushed out too many working folks, and this is a chance where we can be able to build more housing. And by doing that, we will be able to address more of our affordability challenges, so our office priority is making sure that we are doing that, but also taking time to listen to each of the neighborhoods that have proposed up zones. Our team has actually been out to every single one of the proposed neighborhood centers in the plan to get a real feel and talk to neighbors about what this would look like and mean. Thank you.
Jesse.
I'm a self-proclaimed relaxed zoner. I think we need to just start building housing like crazy personally. I support mother-in-laws, I support cottages, I support really anywhere to put anybody that's comfortable, warm, and everyone needs a home, so thank you.
Ray, would you go next, please?
Great question. On a personal level, my mother, before she passed away, we had a four-bedroom home, but due to the uprising in property taxes, we couldn't afford it. And affordable housing, as it says, is supposed to be for those who will be able to afford it. And as a result of us not being able to afford it, we end up losing the property to property taxes and then having to be moved out. And we're seeing this likewise in the Central District with the regenification. People are unable to pay the rent, and so what are they doing? They're being forced out of sometimes the places where they were born, and we have to do a better job at that.
Rachel.
Thank you. So I am for density. I want to live in a big city that's dense with lots of places for people to live. My vision for downtown is to build, 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 and I love the idea of these neighborhood centers to these, where you can live and go to, walk to the grocery store, walk to laundry, walk to whatever you need. I'm a big fan of walking. I don't have a car. I want to live the city life. I want to live in a place I can walk to everything I need, and I love this idea of it spreading around the city. What I don't love is the permanent supportive housing experiment, the housing first. And if you don't know what that means, it means allowing people in late-stage addiction and severe mental illness to live without having to have treatment, without needing to do that as a result of, to be able to have their housing. And every neighborhood, in Capitol Hill, there's five of these housing-first buildings rather than treatment-first. They destroy neighborhoods and make life a living hell for the residents and the businesses.
Well, now we'll turn to position nine and start with Mia. No, Mia isn't here. Deion.
Great, thank you so much. This is really important to me because housing is both an affordability solution and a climate solution, which is something I'm really passionate about. So I purchased my home because I got down payment assistance, and that's the only way that my family was able to stay in the city. My co-parent, who I'm raising a kid with, lives in subsidized affordable housing, and that's how he's able to stay in the city. So I think this is critical. I think we need to ensure that we are maximizing our city's ability to ensure affordability through thoughtful planning on density. So I think we need to ensure that we are protecting our neighborhood centers so that we actually can build walkable communities. I also want to make sure that we are supporting the city's social housing developer. The city overwhelmingly voted in support of social housing this February despite an effort from the council to undermine that effort, and it's really important that we get that right so that we can have different kinds of affordability in Seattle. And lastly, as a climate solution, it's important to think if, when people are getting pushed out of the city, that it disrupts not just their connections to their communities, but it means more people are driving in, and that doesn't help us do what we need to do to make this a livable planet. So I want us to make sure that we are getting that right. Thank you.
I was trying to mix things up here. Sarah.
So we need more housing, period. And I am especially interested in ensuring that we get more workforce-level housing because that is a gap in the affordable housing that we provide. Let's face it, we are not going to be able to subsidize our way out of our housing crisis and our need for more housing, even though we've made historic investments in affordable housing. That means we do have to create the conditions through zoning to allow for privately developed housing that will be, that will serve a mix of income. And that is why I'm very proud of the legislation that I passed to allow for workforce housing to be built where it belongs in an already-dense neighborhood, the Stadium District, and that is something, that is a model that I think that we need to continue. It is fortunate that I do have a record to point to, and I do have to say that when it comes to housing and other solutions that we're going to be talking about tonight, like treatment, I've, you know, developed plans for treatment, allocated over $500,000 or $600,000 in on-demand treatment and medication, mobile medication vans. And so let's keep focused on my true record and how I can build on it going forward.
Connor.
So in simple terms, what this plan is going to do is not build enough housing that we need. And all it's going to do is just concentrate the density in just pockets of our city while protecting, as I like to call the Lake community, where all the nice fancy houses get to stay, the neighborhoods don't change at all, and they get everything that they want. But neighborhoods like mine in Little Saigon get all the affordable housing, get all of that kind of housing, which is great, but then it just, it helps create a distress in the neighborhood. Affordable housing needs to be spread throughout the city so that everybody both grows together. The best neighborhoods are ones that have a diversity of income, of people, of everything, and not just having it segregated like this plan is going to continue to do. And we do need to have more affordable housing and to increase our social housing developer. Like my opponent said, Sarah has cut, tried to undermine the social housing developer, and we need to be strengthening it, not trying to tear it down.
Thank you. Go on.
We'll go on to question three. What steps would you recommend to improve public safety and response time of city police? And we'll start with position nine, Deion.
Thank you. This is really important to me. I will share just a little bit. I've had my fair share of challenges with public safety. I've had my personal vehicle stolen, and I think that we all want this to be a city that works for all of us. One of the first things that I did when I was running was I did a ride-along with the city's care department, which is our sort of third department, our alternative response team. And what I saw was really incredible, and I think that is a team that's tasked with responding to people who are in crisis. And right now, the care team can only be deployed, is meant to be co-deployed with SPD. And I think one of the things that we can do to ensure that we are improving SPD's response times is to allow the care team to be fully functional and set up to do their job as they were intended to do. That also means ensuring that we are expanding the staff for that department. There's about 12 people in that department who are tasked with responding to calls citywide, and I think we need to make sure that we have more staffing there and that people are getting the, what I call, sort of the right response is matched to the right call. I think SPD is a critical component of our public safety system, but they are not the only component of our public safety system, and we need to be investing across the system so that SPD can spend their time well and wisely.
Once again, Sarah. I'm sorry, I, once again, Sarah. Oh, the question is? What steps would you recommend to improve public safety and response time of city police?
Well, I've already noted that the single most important thing that we can do to improve the response time of the police is to add more officers. My very first bill in office in 2022 was a call for hiring bonuses to, to attract and be more competitive with neighboring jurisdictions who are also trying to fill up their ranks. I put forward legislation that is credited for unprecedented hiring right now because it simply changed some processes and how we, how applications are processed. And we did bring, led, under my leadership, we did bring officer salaries up to competitive levels after a three-year stalemate. So, the numbers count because you'll get a response faster, and we need to move those patrol officers back up into the investigative units where they can focus on the big issues, how guns are getting onto our streets, how drug, drug dealers and cartels are infiltrating our neighborhoods. And that will help go a long way to, to longer-lasting change. In addition, I do say, to the crisis responders, because not everybody should be responding to people in crisis, that calls for a different kind of response, and we are in labor negotiations with the Police Officers Guild to enable single dispatch teams of those responders.
Okay.
Yes, so, one way to help improve public safety and response times of SPD is to make them not do the work of social workers. I've been the victim of assault before, and who am I going to be calling? I'm going to be calling the police. And if I'm the victim of, because I was the victim of assault, but if I get robbed, if I'm, if my business is getting vandalized, I'm going to be calling the police to do those things. I'm not going to be calling the police to go assist someone who is overdosing. That's going to be the work of a social worker. And currently, in the realm of public safety that Sarah Nelson has created, there's police officers that are going to be addressing things that a social worker, that the care team can, should be doing on there. I, again, live in Little Saigon, which has a anti-drug zone on there, which is supposed to have, apparently supposed to have police come to clear the area, arrest drug users, do all of those things. And that's taking away from them doing act, solving actual crime, going after people who are shootings, are sex traffickers, those people who deserve to get arrested by our police department.
Thank you. Question, no, let's see, we didn't do, we didn't do position eight, right? So, I'm sorry. So, let's start with Ray this time.
I agree with my opponents. Definitely, we need to fully staff policing while fastly pushing for cultural policing, policing in such that it is done so holistically, not just in policing different, in different parts of the neighborhood, but policing that is accountable, policing that is restorative, to making sure that people are, are being heard in cases of emergency, that we have crisis response teams like WE Care. The acronym is WE Extend Compassions, Answers, Restoration, and Empathy, to making sure that we're meeting the people at their point of need.
Andrea. I'm, I'm going this way now, just, just keeping you on your toes.
We need not just quick responses to public safety scenarios, but the right response. And scaling first responders from emergency medical, fire, police, and our behavioral health responders are core to that. I've been on ride-alongs to see firsthand how our system is working and even been in emergency dispatch to better understand us as well. And we need also in a public safety system that is accountable, and I've been a strong advocate for accountability in that system. But it's not just enough to respond to public safety scenarios, but also do our part to prevent these things from happening in the first place. Gun violence continues to be such a pervasive issue in this community, especially harming young people. And I spent time during our most recent state legislative session partnering with our state legislators to pass common sense gun control legislation, including permit to purchase, which successfully passed. This is a major step forward for our community, and that's why I'm endorsed by Moms Demand Action and the Alliance for Gun Responsibility. And lastly, I'd be remiss if I didn't say our communities are all safest when we're all healthy and housed. Thank you.
And that was Andrea. I'm sorry. No, it, it, I, I, I see what I've done. I've done it. It's a Lexus. I beg your pardon. My typo here. Jesse.
Like many have said before, it's a matter of the right job for the right people. Response times will go up if police are only summoned to situations where they are beneficial. I think it's also useful to make sure they are not neglecting any neighborhoods and that we have a decent amount of police spread out around the city. That seems like the most practical way of looking at it.
Thank you. Okay, we're.
Oh, I didn't.
One more. Rachel. Okay, thank you. A lot of help here.
Thank you. This is a subject that's dear to my heart. I will be the representation, the voice for the Seattle Police Department on the City Council. I think we sorely need this. Our police department is the most accountable in the nation. We need three times the police officers if we're going to be a world-class city with safety. And we have to allow the police officers to do their job. That means we have to have our own city jail where they can book, arrest and book. We need the long-term treatment so they can take the, the drug addicts that, that want treatment and a long-term mental health hospital so they can take those who need mental health care to a hospital. We need more cops, not counselors. And we, I want to bring the pride back to our, our Seattle's finest. They deserve it. They put themselves in harm's way every single day for us, and they deserve respect. And I'm excited to, I think once we have, are allowing the police to do their job, recruitment will be easy. We will have people who will be proud to serve because they can actually do their job. It becomes a vocation and has purpose and meaning.
Thank you. Now, we are ready for question four. Is that right? Okay. Mayor Harrell and Councilmember Rink have proposed reducing the city's business and occupation tax to exempt businesses with under $200 million in gross revenue and increase the tax on businesses with higher revenue. Do you support this proposal? Why or why not? So, position eight, we'll do again, I guess, that's what. I knew I'd get confused. Okay, all right. Let's go back to Rachel and start with her this time.
Great. I'm running for city council to save the city from being taxed to death. I'm completely against this new tax. Small businesses, I'm a small business owner. I've had my business since 1998. I don't want the city's handouts, and I don't want the city taxing our job creators to death and having them run off to other states. I want basic services. I want the city to work for me. I want safety. I want the police to call when I come, when I, when I have to call. And trust me, with this fentanyl epidemic, I have been the victim of many, many crimes. And I want the garbage picked up on the street. I want pressure washing. I want clean sidewalks. I want a city that I can walk down the street, and so can you, that our, every age can ride public transit and be safe. And I'm against more taxes. Let's spend the money that we already have more wisely and stop giving bribes to small business and pitting small business against big business. I'm against it.
Alexis.
Well, it's our proposal, and I was really pleased to be able to partner with Mayor Harrell on this proposal that we worked with alongside a number of small businesses in the city, but also human services providers, service providers that are taking care of our neighbors right now. Because I want to be clear, this isn't just a tax to, for the sake of a tax. This is a ability for us to raise much-needed revenue to take care of the needs of our community. We've all seen what's happening at the federal level. We are seeing federal funding cut already in our cities. I'm hearing from service providers that lost grants and they're not able to buy diapers to support families. We're hearing about now with a big, beautiful tax bill being proposed in the Senate that would cut SNAP benefits by a third. There are huge cuts coming to our community, and I'm worried about the well-being of our full city. And this proposal gives much-needed relief to small businesses while asking some of our largest businesses here in Seattle that have built their wealth off of the city's infrastructure, our, our amazing workforce in our city, to chip in a bit more so we can weather this time. And we have built a large coalition of labor advocates, small businesses, and human service providers who are standing with us.
Jesse.
Hello? As for the proposal, absolutely, we need to prioritize small businesses over corporations. As for, if it's a battle between the two, I'd argue it kind of always is, and I pick the side of small businesses. Small businesses, the food is better, go to restaurants, yeah, way better, the service is better, the grocery stores, more pleasant to go to. I'm just being real here. But yes, I am in complete agreement with Rink and the current mayor. Thank you.
Ray.
I likewise do agree. We need to design our tax policies with the full context of our economy from a comprehensive view. We need to make sure that we are doing what is appropriate, and let's make sure that we're meticulous when we're looking at raising taxes, how we're going to do it, and who are the people that are most affected. I'm currently seeing business closes. We just had a, a restaurant in Clement City called The Romano's just closed recently because it was unable to pay the rent. We see that with Catfish Corner in the Central District, a cultural restaurant who was owned by Terrell who been, had to close because they couldn't afford it.
Thank you. Position nine, Mia, we'll start with you again.
Mia's not there.
Oh, all right. I beg your pardon. Dionne, I'm looking at Dionne and seeing Mia. I apologize.
No, that's okay. Yeah, I think this is an excellent proposal. Many of you will know that Washington State has the 49th worst tax code in the country for low-income and working families. And I will echo what Councilmember Rink said. We are in a moment where the federal government is threatening cities like ours over our values, and it is incredibly important that we make sure that cities have adequate resources to invest in critical services like food programs, like things that keep people housed. And I think this is an important and positive step forwards towards doing that. In addition to that, since I've been campaigning, I've been talking with small business owners, many of whom are still in the red, and this can provide an important opportunity to make sure that we are keeping these fantastic cultural institutions in place in our city that they can weather this moment that we are in and that we can also make the city more livable for all of our residents. So, I think this is a really, really important step forward for us at this time and an opportunity to build a fairer city.
Connor.
Like almost everybody on this stage, I support Councilmember Riddick's plan to tax our large corporations to help save our small businesses that are on there. Like many people have said, the Trump tax bill that is going to be going forward is going to give massive, like, money to our large corporations, and they're not going to be putting that money into their workers, they're not going to be doing that into reinvesting into America. They're going to be using it for stock buybacks and to, and their corporate pay. Their, and so, we need to tax those people because they use our resources at higher rates than many of the people here in our room today. And they need to be paying their fair share to, since they use our resources, they rely on our small businesses, they should be paying their fair share on what they're doing on here. And I will say that, just my, a quick idea, not idea, statement on it, is that many of the cuts that are going to be happening on the federal government have been happening here in the city of Seattle. In the budget plan proposed and passed by Council President Nelson, we had a million dollars cut to food assistance programs. We had two, $2 million cut from social services and diversion programs on there, and those are the same types of cuts that happen on the federal government, and we can't be doing that here in Seattle. We need to be supporting everybody.
Thank you. Sarah.
No doubt, raising the threshold for, from 100,000 to 2 million is a no-brainer. That will help small businesses that make less than 2, 2 million gross receipts, which isn't really that much, and I've been advocating for that kind of relief for a long time. The question I still have, and I am honestly saying that I am trying to, to learn more about what this will pay for and how many businesses and, and the jobs that will be affected in this, in the larger businesses, because we have an ecosystem, and I am just starting to talk to small businesses and small business representatives. Just today, I was talking to Eugene Wasserman, who represents the North Seattle Industrial Association, and he asked, and it's small and larger business, and he said, our guys depend on the larger, the, the marine industries and, and companies. And he said, but what are we getting in, in exchange for potentially a higher BNO tax? Even if it's slight, we're not getting that much more public safety, and I want to make sure that we are making the promises that we can keep to our business community when we're talking about where this money will go. It's only 90 million estimated, and so, we really do need to know how the money will be spent when we are imposing or talking about a new or raised tax.
Hey, thank you. I think at this point, we will go on to the closing statements with, with a one-minute closing statement from each of the candidates, and let's see if I can get my order straight. I think this is just reverse of the opening statements. So, we start with Sarah.
I'll just say that I look forward to, to giving you my contact information so that you can call me up and ask me what I, more specific questions about the policies that you have questions about and what I have done. I am proud to say that I am endorsed by the Seattle Times, Seattle Firefighters, the Building and Construction Trades Council, and many other unions, as well as elected and former elected leaders like Adam Smith, former governors Gregoire and Locke, Senate Majority Leader Jamie Peterson, and a whole host of others. But what I really want to convey is that I have worked extremely hard on what I perceive and what is, has been confirmed in polls and in articles in the paper on my top, on your top priorities, which are public safety, making progress on homelessness, and housing affordability. And I'm going to keep on doing that. I ran the first time to try to fix this city, and I'm running again because I'm not done, and we certainly can't go backwards. Thank you.
Connor Nash.
Thank you. Like I said in my opening statement, I'm running for city council because our current council does not listen to the people that they are supposed to be representing on here. Council President Nelson said that she, email her, she'll respond to you, but if you go to a council chamber meeting and you don't agree with everything that she says, she doesn't listen to you. When you say, "We don't want these terrible legislations passed," she doesn't care what you have to say on there. We need a city council that listens to you and is responsive to your needs and your wants and your desires on here. And I will say that, confirmed in polls, it's very interesting that Council President Nelson would say that because polling shows that Council President Nelson is actually the most unpopular public official in the entire city of Seattle, and we have a Republican city attorney who is also pretty terrible as well. So, I also look at the polling data when I see those numbers as well. But I want to be the council member that listens to you. I do not care if you disagree with everything that I have to say. I will be there, and I will listen to you, whether it's at council chambers, at a monthly office hours, or in emails. I will be there for you, to represent you, regardless of how, what you think of me. Thank you.
Dionne Foster.
Again, thank you so much for having us. One thing we didn't get a chance to talk about this that much tonight was the economy and our support for workers. One of the reasons that I decided to get into this race is because I saw the city council going backwards on issues that I really care about. Last year, when the council president became council president, one of the first things the council introduced was a bill to go backwards on gig worker minimum wage standards. I believe that we can go forwards on delivering a city that is affordable for people, that we can go forwards on making progress for public safety, that we can go forwards on making this a city where we can all live and thrive without doing it by going backwards on labor standards. And I think that is incredibly important in this moment where we are seeing more precarious employment and more threats from the federal government. I am proudly endorsed by MLK Labor, by Congresswoman Pramila Jayapal, by every single one of the legislative district Democrats, and dozens of elected officials who are representing our city in Olympia, and I would be really proud to be supported by you. I look forward to continuing the conversation after the panel. Thank you.
That was candidate for position nine, and now... That was candidate for position nine, and I'll return to position eight. Let's start with Rachel and come down the line.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure to be here tonight, and my vision for the city is recovery. So something I didn't tell you about myself is I'm a recovered drug addict myself. I have 35 years of continuous abstinence. That's weekends and holidays included. So I have experience, for the last 35 years, I've been spending my volunteer time helping addicts not only stop using drugs, but learning how to live a life without drugs. So my vision for the city is, is this fentanyl epidemic with an intervention, a strong intervention, consequences for public drug use and the crimes associated with public drug use. This is compassionate care, that we can see these addicts recover. This is possible. And what a beautiful vision for our city. Through compassionate care to give not only the severe drug addicts, but the severely mentally ill care that they need, and then our city can prosper. And we can do this with the money we have. We don't have to charge more taxes. And I'm looking forward to serving every citizen of Seattle on the Seattle City Council. Thank you.
Again, thank you guys so very much for this opportunity. I know that Seattle is a very diverse city, and I look forward to joining city council to make sure that I bring the very important issues that are dear to not only my heart, but yours. Fair taxes, making sure that we're protecting the most vulnerable, our elderly, making sure that you feel safe in your home. Public safety is a drive for me. Again, if you know that me being a recovery comes out in the heels of public safety. And so those would be some very important issues along with affordable housing, trees, canopies, all of those great things that make Seattle such a vibrant city. I thank you for this opportunity. I am currently endorsed by Tanya, former City Council, Tanya Wu, and Rivera, and several others. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for having me here tonight. Last year, we had a record-breaking win. And in just seven months in, in office, I think I've proven myself to be someone who brings people together on solutions and makes things happen. We have been working really hard. This is the campaign that Planned Parenthood Alliance Advocates Trust is going to fight for reproductive healthcare access. This is the campaign that every single Democratic Party organization has stood by because they trust we're going to uphold core Democratic Party values. And this is the campaign that frontline workers, unions representing frontline workers, from nurses, bus drivers, and, and so many others, trusts is going to fight tirelessly for working people. And now I'm asking for your support so we can fight together against the politics of fascism and build a Seattle that truly works for all of us. Thank you.
Jesse.
Tonight, we have heard from a good number of candidates, but let's cut to brass tacks. We need a council member who is willing to speak to absolutely everybody, not select members of certain coalitions. We need someone who has a can-do attitude and knows how to get things done. That is what I do. I am determined. I am headstrong, and I see barriers as just a way to improve myself so I can get through those barriers. Anyway, have a good night, everyone.
All right. Thank you very much. And now I'll turn the podium over to May, our chair.
Thank you, Laura. Laura had a really hard job. At the very last minute, everything changed because one candidate didn't come. So she really deserves a big round of applause. I want to thank all of you, our at-large city council candidates. You really gave, did a good job and let us get to know you, and we really appreciate your willingness to run for office in these very contentious times. It's not easy. Credit also should go to all of those working behind the scenes to make these forums possible. Adele Reynolds and Dorothy, Doris Ray are timekeepers. They too have a hard job. Doris is also the chair of the Questions Committee, and the Questions Committee works diligently to ask really thoughtful, provocative questions, and we appreciate that so much. As you could see, and lastly, I want to give thanks to Risa Ransom, the Horizon House Events Programs Administrator, and to tonight's audiovisual director, Chase Hinton. And last, but most important, I want to thank you, our audience. You are the voters. You have the ultimate power to decide which candidates are best qualified to represent you on the city council. So this was our first forum. We have many more. Our next two are on July 7th and July 14th. They will probably feature the mayor's race and the city attorney's race, but we're still trying to decide in what order we can fit in all of the races that we want to share with you. And that's it for tonight. Thank you.